I call this regular meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for November 22, 2022. This meeting is being recorded. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer.
Yes.
Barbo.
Yes.
Bona.
Yes.
Harpen.
Here.
Obasahan.
Here.
Valeskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Nine yeas, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrances. Remembrance. And the pledge.
Pledge and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule of the minutes of October 11, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Counsel Harpen.
Are these all online?
They are under the agendas. I still need to compile them under the meeting minutes section. They are online, they're just not in the correct section as of yet.
Okay, so if you look under agendas, they're there.
Yeah, I'm working on getting those fixed, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the minutes? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing of visitors on agenda items. If you wish, please approach the mic, give your name, address for the record. You have two minutes on agenda items only, and it is no personal attacks.
My name is Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinsey Street, and I would encourage this council not to change the split, not to vote for the split rate, or keep it, I mean. Because the commercials, they can just raise prices to cover their expenses. And they enjoy all these perks. They receive city shoveling of their sidewalks, empty the trash barrels, cheap parking on Eagle Street, and the city plows it, using sidewalks to display their merchandise, serving food, and paying employees minimum wage or cut their hours. And they violate the American Disabilities Act. And that may disappear all in. You are not reciprocating, or you're not representing the people who elected you because owners of businesses Biden and Wilkinson should rescuse themselves from voting on this issue. And I want you to count your votes, because two votes don't put you back in office. You're supposed to be representing the people of North Adams. And another perk that they have, it's paid city health insurance. A split tax rate does not, does not pass.
You have two minutes.
Already?
Yeah. Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, my name is Jessica Sweeney, 190 Prospect Street. I'm here tonight to speak about the tax proposal. I mostly want to address the narrative of residents versus commercial or businesses. I think this is a really dangerous narrative for the council, for our community, to be engaging in. The reality is, is that many of our businesses are owned and operated by residents, including myself. I own and operate two businesses. Almost all of the anchors of downtown businesses are also residents of this community. We are all community members at the end of the day. And the split tax rate, in my opinion, is not going to help us move forward in terms of our economic development. I am a small business. I try really hard to employ people who are local and who live here, and I try to employ them at better than minimum wage. And that's really hard when our rents are rising pretty constantly. And as also I own commercial property, those taxes are rising in that commercial property space. I already had to scale back my staffing time in order to pay this tax bill this year, because it's outrageous. I'm not advocating that the burden be put on residents either. I think we need to do a deep look into our tax rate issues and look at it from a big picture and be more strategic about how we are encouraging economic development and supporting our residents in this community. I don't think what is before us is the answer, and I hope that this council and the administration will continue to look deeper into how we can get there. Also, I think that we, I'm losing my train of thought, sorry, I just had a baby, so got a little bit of mom brain, but I'll just leave it at that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next.
Paul Moyarty, 46 Johnson Street. Again, about the tax rate, I'd like to thank Mayor Maxey, Assistant Len Court, and the assessors for working hard to come up with what I thought was, I mean, no one likes their taxes raised, but I thought what they came up with was a very reasonable proposal. I didn't like the way the council was shooting it down last week, because I think if we were concerned about just the quote-unquote "mom-and-pop" stores, I could live with that. But what's now being proposed, that came out of Finance Committee, is something that will put more burden on the residents, and I don't mind giving a break to mom-and-pop stores, but we're also giving it to the bigger commercial stores like Walmart, Price, not Price, just Stop and Shop, Big Y, the Cumberland Farms, and we're doing it all on the back of the residents. So for that reason, I would encourage a vote for what the mayor and the assessors proposed versus what came out of Finance Committee last week.
Thank you. Next. Anyone else? You do not get to speak during the actual item, just so you know. So if you have something to add, now's your time. Okay, so we will move on. Without objection, I would like to move Council Paper 12,192 Mayor's Communication 112 to publicly swear in officers in service with the North Adams Police Department tonight.
Counselor Blackmer, I'm sorry, but two of our officers are on a call right now, so if we could continue with the agenda, I'm sorry, duty calls.
Okay, that's fine.
Hopefully, they'll be here momentarily, but...
Okay. Disregard what I just said. Okay. Council Paper 8717-41, an order authorizing the mayor to establish the 2023 fiscal year tax levy for residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. This was voted to refer to the Finance Committee and postponed to the meeting of November 22. An update from Finance, and then a motion would be helpful at the end of your update.
Sure. So hopefully everyone today got the Finance Committee report. It was lengthy. The meeting went, you know, over an hour, about three pages of minutes, and a lot was covered. I think all the counselors were present, which was nice. And we had a number of small businesses, some residents, and it seemed to be pretty decent discussion. We, the mayor, you know, stood by her number of 1.75 for the commercial, stating that it would lessen, you know, the burden on the residents as their properties were assessed higher and their values were going up, so their taxes were increasing, and felt that it was a good time this year to go back to the maximum amount on the commercial, because their assessed values have either stayed the same or dropped, and their tax bill would be most likely decreasing. Not on everyone, and in both cases, not everyone's residential rate would be going up depending on if it depreciated, and not everyone's commercial property would be going down. But on average, that's what it was looking like. On the flip side, the council brought this back from the last meeting, because we voted down the 1.72 at that time, because there were some counselors who wanted more discussion on it, and it just wasn't agreed upon, so it went to Finance Committee. That night, the assessor gave us some different numbers, depending on, we went from 1.68, which is what we've had last year, and I think the previous year, up to 1.75, which is the maximum amount allowed. In most cases, it was showing that the amount difference on the tax bill for the residents would be from 0 to 70, 70 being the max, if we went to 1.78, or 68. And, you know, I believe, was it, was it zero? Remind me, was it zero if we did the full shift? If it was 1.75, the amount on the residential was...
The tax rate went down in dollars.
Right, I think we were talking, yeah, we were talking zero, like, we had a number at the 1.75, which, and then depending on the percentage, if we, every percentage we dropped on that shift would increase a certain amount. At the end of the night, we agreed at 1.715, which would add approximately about $27 to the annual residential tax bill. No?
It would add $27 to what the mayor proposed.
Correct. Right.
Well, because it's...
Sorry, yes. So it adds $27 to what was being presented to us, so, which was 294, about 294 and some change. So it adds $27 if we go with the 1.715. That's what the committee has recommended. We did hear from a number of small businesses, most of them were from Main Street, and as we just heard Ms. Sweeney tonight talking about their struggles and challenges. And, but again, at the end, the recommendation was to bring forward to the council a 1.715 shift. It was right down the middle of 1.68 and 1.7. It was dead center, so that's why that number came up. Again, all the minutes were sent today, this morning, and everyone was present, so everyone should, was there to know what went on. Thank you.
You're going to make a motion?
Oh. So I make a motion at this time that we, we accept a 1.715 shift.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Bona.
Yep. So the next morning, I did receive an email from Mr. Carver, David Carver. I have forwarded that email on to counselors, and Mr. Carver brings interesting views in the sense that he owns a considerable amount of residential property and a considerable amount of commercial property. I did forward that email on. I can read it into the record. Let's see, so, so this is from Mr. Carver. "Looks like you've achieved a compromise and also shed light on the issue. It is an important one for everyone to understand. Any community is a combination of business and residential, and a healthy one is helped by a fair tax rate for both sides. If the business side is overtaxed and shrinks, it is not good. It's not a good thing for jobs, investments, and blight, and ultimately, the loss of revenue will get shifted to remaining residential, so over time, it's important to strike the right balance. A high rate also pushes nonprofits to buy commercial properties, taking them off the tax roll, further eroding revenues. To exaggerate, to make the point, if a tax rate is 100% of your income, you collect zero, because no one will operate, and it's zero, and if it's zero, there is also no revenue. There is a mathematical tax rate that will maximize revenue and support a stable economy. All the studies done on tax classification indicate maximum shift is detrimental over time, but the damage accumulates slowly. Look back over the last 40 years and look at the loss of revenue from commercial and dramatic rise in nonprofit ownership." And that was from David Carver. Now, I did, at the beginning of that, and I do want to express that what was said here was David Carver's opinion, in the sense that it was through discussion, and this is something that new. So David Carver has brought to us before, forward before on the Breen Center. So the Breen Center is the former transcript building, and the council in the past has issued a TIF on that that froze the tax rate, because at the time, Mr. Carver said that if he did not get a TIF, and he was going to make a million-dollar investment into that building, he would just sell it to the Breen Center, and they would, we would get no taxes off it. And he has continued to state that, to say that as taxes go up, that sooner or later, the Breen Center will likely end up just purchasing that building. And he has said that to us in public meetings, and I know he has said that to other counselors. As for noting the Roots Teen Center and the Price Chopper Building, those are two examples of properties that have recently gone from commercial to resident, or sorry, from commercial to tax-exempt. And that was also mentioned the night before at the meeting. So that email was forwarded to everyone. The, and the reason why I forwarded that was so you had time to look at that. It was an opinion that was not discussed the night before, and I understood that as it was material that would be pertinent for this meeting to absorb. As for other discussion, I will say I have, one of the reasons I haven't referred or forwarded anything else is other stuff was all phone calls or personal conversations. In most cases, people just, businesses expressing concern or thanking for trying to at least remember them, and that the tax rate, you know, they feel the tax rate is absurd and just too far spread apart. Thank you.
Any else? On the Counselor Shade.
Looking at these numbers has been really difficult as a new counselor, learning exactly what it means, what the shift is, what it does, how it affects our community. In doing the research and trying to get a better understanding, what I have found is that our commercial taxes are far too high, and that creates an environment where we have less jobs and economic opportunity for the people who live here, which means it's hard to get a decent-paying job that's more than minimum wage, because those businesses have to spend even more money on the taxes that go to the city. Now, taxes aren't a bad thing for the city when it comes to a business like Walmart, but unfortunately, the state of Massachusetts doesn't allow us to tax Walmart differently than any restaurant that you would visit, or any small store that you would visit on Main Street. They're all considered the same things. And that's really where a problem that I see lies, is that the state kind of groups everybody together as one thing when they're completely different entities. They don't operate the same way, they don't have the same structures, and so we tax small businesses the same way we tax corporations. It's really not a system that works very well, and it's not really fair to everybody. With that, because we've kept the commercial tax rate so high over the past couple of decades, it shows in our downtown areas. It shows when more properties are being purchased by nonprofits and come off the tax roll, and we can't collect anything on those. It's really important that we find a better balance. I don't know how we fix separating the two entities, and that's a state issue, that I don't know that we individually as a city could even try to separate out. But at this time, we have to do what's best for everybody, the entire community. It's not just residents and businesses, as Jeff said. We're all one community. This is our home. We're all part of North Adams. We have to find better balance. I don't think that we have any answer that's going to make anybody fully happy one way or another tonight. This is a long-term project that we have to keep working on, and this is something that's going to require a lot more time and energy and effort to help the city overall. However, for tonight, and in this instance, a balance was found between two rates where if we had kept it at 1.68, we're looking at a much more significant tax rate than where it's at at the 1.715. So I think a balance was made, a compromise, if you will, that doesn't really make anybody happy, but it also doesn't hurt everybody. And the goal should never be to hurt everybody. The goal shouldn't be to hurt anybody at all. But the way the system is set up, it just doesn't work very well. I don't like the system, but we have to work with what we're given, unfortunately.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Counselor, but our live stream is not working. I just got a message that there's no volume, that they can't hear us on the live stream. I'm sorry, Counselor, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Can we... It says it's still on.
There's the volume.
Yeah, but are they not getting the vol, they're seeing it, they're not hearing it.
Clerk Valier, should we try to increase the volume on the owl? Because remember, we reduced it last time.
Oh, right, because we had Collins.
Yes.
Maybe that's it.
Thank you, Mayor.
That was the speaker, though, not the mic.
Five-minute recess?
I don't think we need five minutes. Okay, can you hear me now? Is anybody responding online?
Is anybody responding, can you?
Maybe.
Keep talking?
Keep talking, Counselor.
People, that's nothing's anybody's ever said to me. So we're going to see if we can hear, if it's working?
No, no one is on here. They're all over.
Mayor, you get...
They said no, people are complaining that they can't hear us.
Okay. Do we want to take a five-minute recess and see if we can address this?
We need to know why we're recessing, we're not shutting that off, because we need to have someone at home telling us if it's working, so. So keep in mind, we're recessing, but the mic is live.
Can you type a message into the thing? Thank you. Five-minute recess.
But the mic is live. If we're...
If we're test- There's audio.
Okay, I would like to actually interrupt this particular agenda item. If everyone doesn't mind, if we could move the officers up for their swearing-in so they can go back out to call.
No issue.
So I will postpone this 10 minutes, this agenda item, until later in the meeting. We're all set with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have two officers that are on duty right now, and we need to get them back on the streets. So I'd like to call Chief Wood and Lieutenant Beverly to stand in front of President Blackmer.
Don't block me this time.
And officers, as I call your name, just come on up, walk by me, and then join the chief and the lieutenant, please. Can everybody hear me? Great. Tonight, it is my honor to present three individuals, fine individuals, to take their oath as full-time police officers with the North Adams Police Department. All three successfully graduated from the police academy on November 10th. Our first officer is Officer Lucas Stafford. Wait till you hear this one, Ivan. "I first met Officer Stafford on the basketball court between Southern Vermont College and Newberry College. I remember him as a fierce competitor on the court, but the first to offer his hand to help the opponent off the floor. I think I was calling to the referee, 'That's an intentional follow,' and then you put your hand out to help my player up, and I said, 'Oh, forget it, ref.'" And that was my first encounter with you, Officer Stafford. Officer Stafford is a 2014 graduate from Newberry College with a degree in communications and sociology. He is the son-in-law of our very own Officer Ivan Cardina. Our next officer is Officer Brittany Tassone. Officer Tassone was described to me by an academy instructor as one strong little lady. Though she be but little, she is fierce but very compassionate, always willing to help others. Officer Tassone is a 2020 graduate from Keene State with degrees in criminal justice and sociology. And a fun fact about Officer Tassone is that she is a twin. Our last, but not least, Officer Khalil Paul. "I recruited Officer Paul for the men's basketball team at MCLA almost 10 years ago. While I am proud of all of my new officers, I am especially proud of Officer Paul, both professionally and personally. You turned out okay, Khalil, if I may say so myself." I don't know, do you have a saying that too, Councillor Obasahen? "Officer Paul is a 2016 graduate from MCLA with a degree in sociology. He started with the North Adams Police Department as a reserve officer in January of 2021. And while in the academy, he got married to his lovely wife, Kayla. Congratulations." So officers, here we are. It's been a long journey. I miss our Sunday text messages. Maybe we'll keep that up for a little while longer to make sure you're on the right page. But the formality part. Officers Paul, Stafford, Tassone, I ask that as you take your oath tonight before us, you do the following. I ask that you be certain that you never betray your integrity, your character, and the public trust. I hope that you always have the courage to hold yourself and others accountable for their actions. I ask that you always maintain the highest ethical standards, and you uphold the values of the administration and the great community that you serve. As Mayor of the City of North Adams, I wish you all the best, and I welcome you to the North Adams family." Clerk Valiers, could you administer the oath, please?
If you all raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Officer Stafford.
I'm Khalil Paul.
I'm Brittany Tassone.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
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 That I will faithfully and impartially-
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 Discharge and perform all the duties.
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 Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a full-time police officer.
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 In the City of North Adams.
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 According to the best of my abilities.
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 Agreeably to the requirements.
Agreeably to the requirements.
Agreeably to the requirement.
Agreeably to the requirement.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, officers. Now get back on the streets.
Thank you.
And no parking on sidewalks. Thank you, councillors, for moving that up.
Thank you. Okay, if we will resume Council Paper 8717-41, an author authorized, an order authorizing the mayor to establish the 2023 fiscal tax year levy for residents, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. And councillor Shade, I think you were speaking.
Yes. Thank you. Going back to everything that I had put on the table here, there is no right answer based on what we can do. I think there needs to be a change on the state level that the city doesn't have any control over. That's the real answer. But for tonight, in understanding that we need to find balance and a compromise for the entire community, businesses, residents, people who work here, people who live here, this is, this belongs to all of us. It's not separate. We're all in it together. We all have a responsibility and a duty to each other so we can grow and thrive. We're in the middle of essentially a recession where inflation has harmed everybody. The cost of everything has gone up. Putting more taxes on businesses is going to cost things to go up even more. Putting more taxes on residents affects their abilities to buy simple household things, simple items like milk and bread that are already really expensive everywhere. So there's really no just one flat-all answer. But I do believe that for this year, this compromise is the best we can do other than going one side or another. I don't like it. I don't think it's the long-term answer. But for the upcoming year, I think it's what we're going to have to do to help, or try to help, and reduce the burden on everybody across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sapienza.
Yes, I mean, this is a very difficult situation to try to balance everything. We're trying to balance the needs of the residents versus the needs of the businesses. Both are important to our city, of course. We need the businesses to provide jobs, attract tourists, and give people in the city a place to shop and to conduct business. Going to the 1.75, which favored the tax shift, going, would favor the residents completely, but put the burden on the businesses. Conversely, the 1.68 put the burden on the residents and gave more of a tax advantage to the businesses. And it's like putting the volume control of a TV. You're either all the way up or you're all the way down. That's not a place you want to be because it doesn't give you any room to move. The Finance Committee on Thursday night came up with a compromise, which was 1.715, which I think is, which is right in the middle, and I think that's the best that we can do. Ideally, you want to have a consistent, you want to have no tax shift at all. But we have to work to get back to that, and I think we have a lot of work to do. And as councillor Shade said, we, it's not an ideal situation, but it's the closest we can come to satisfying, hopefully satisfying, the majority of the residents and the businesses. And hopefully, someday, we will achieve a balance. And we need to, you know, consider our businesses. Our businesses are struggling. Maybe not the Walmarts or the Cumberland Farms or the Stop &amp; Shops, but the small businesses, our Main Street businesses, our Eagle Street businesses, Holden Street, wherever they happen to be located, the local businesses are struggling. They're having to compete with wages. If somebody else is hiring people at a higher wage, it's very difficult for these people to attract people to work for them at an affordable rate. And by adding to the tax burden, that makes that task even more difficult. So I would favor, as a interim solution, and for tonight, I would favor the 1.715 tax shift. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Barba.
I guess to start tonight, I would like to say that this is a complex issue. As I sit here tonight as a city councillor, I'm not wearing the hat of a homeowner, and I'm not wearing the hat of a business owner. I'm here to represent all the business of North Adams, and that goes beyond Main Street, Eagle Street, and Holden Street. I've heard from multiple businesses. I've heard from a number of residents. And what we have in North Adams is a revenue issue. I've heard it alluded to for the past years. As a resident, I've heard councillor Bona discuss the fact that this has been going on for decades now, this tax shift. We have a revenue problem. It doesn't matter who's paying the tax. Councillor Wilkinson stated it clearly, and he's 100% correct. No matter what the number is, it isn't solving our problem. It might make Group A happy today and the resident homeowner not happy, but what we have is a revenue issue. And that is what we need to deal with as a council. That's my opinion. Until that, we do need to shrink this gap. But there's also, besides residents and business, we need to look at all streams of revenue, and that may need to include some nonprofit that's not been discussed. Every year, the same debate happens at this time of the year, and it's, there's never been a solution or a resolution that's come forward to me. So I sincerely believe what we have is a revenue issue, and that is just not being addressed. We put a Band-Aid on it consistently.
Councillor Harpen and councillor Bona.
I just want to thank councillor Barba for saying that. I think it is a bigger, this whole thing is a bigger-picture issue. And I think former councillor Sweeney said the same thing when she stood up and spoke, that, you know, we really need to look at this on a higher level than in looking at this once a year and kind of putting the businesses and the homeowners, you know, at odds. Because really, we shouldn't be. We need to resolve the whole issue, which I don't think that we're there yet. But we really need to dig a little bit deeper and see where we can get some additional revenue. Right now, when I look at these charts that I'm given here, and it's hard because people say, well, what's 1.75 tax shift mean? I mean, this doesn't mean anything to anybody. But there's a range between 1.68 and 1.75. So the city council can pick and choose between that range of where the taxes should be. And so within that range, some, it's higher for the businesses or higher for the residents, the homeowners. So as I look at this that was given to us from our assessor, and the mayor had originally picked the highest shift, which is the 1.75. So I'm just going to stick with the 1.75 for now. This is what the mayor proposed. And the first chart she gave us is average single-family home residential tax bill at 1.75 will be $3,399. This is the average. And this is what we normally use, we've used in the past. Some are higher, some are lower, but generally, we're going to use the average. We've always have. So that would be the average taxes for the average residential tax bill. With a 1.75 shift, the bill will be increasing $294. And then all the way down to the 1.68, it would increase $376. So now, if we go to the average commercial property, the average commercial property, again, at the 1.75 that the mayor proposed, is $16,648. The shift, again, is going from 175 to 168. No matter which one we choose, their tax bill will decrease. No matter what shift we choose, between 175 to 168, the average commercial property tax bill will decrease between $308 or $972. So no matter what we choose, it'll decrease. The small business personal property, same thing. 1.75 that the mayor proposed is, on average, $371. The tax shift goes from 175 to 1.68. Each one will have a decrease. All local small businesses will have a decrease between $30 and $45 for small businesses, no matter what shift we choose. The personal property tax that all businesses have as well, this, again, we're going to start with the mayor's 1.75 shift. The average taxpayer for business personal property will pay $6,256. However, between the tax shift of 175 to 168, the bill will still decrease from the year before. It's still, they're still going to have a decrease. So no matter what shift you choose, the business's personal property tax shift will, taxes, average tax bill will decrease. The business personal property, small business personal property will decrease. Commercial tax property tax, no matter what shift, it's going to decrease. But the single-family home will increase, no matter what. It's going to increase no matter what the shift is. So that's how I looked at it. And I didn't look at it based on, you know, let's try to find an equal point within the tax shift between 168 and 175. I was trying to find equity within what we will actually be paying either as a residential taxpayer, a small business taxpayer, a large business taxpayer. And no matter what the shift is for business, their taxes are going to decrease. And no matter what the shift is for residential, it's going to increase. So I do support the mayor in this 1.75 shift because I, no matter what the increase for the resident, it's going to be an increase, and I don't want to make it more than what we have to. So I am going to support the mayor on the 1.75 tax shift. Thank you.
I just want to clarify. You'd said 1.68 to 1.75, which is are the numbers we are working with, but we can actually not have a tax split, and it could be anywhere from 1 to 1.75. And there are communities that have a 1% and don't have a tax split. And in that case, our residential rate would probably triple or quadruple. I haven't seen that number in recent years, but it, we don't do that. But I want to clarify that it can go from 1 to 1.75 and not 1.68.
Right, what we're looking at, the information that was provided to us by the assessor and what we're reviewing.
Right, I understand that. I just want to clarify. Councillor Bona.
Yeah, so I believe it was Rye Howard, who was at the last committee meeting. They own the Baron B Bookshop and also sits on the planning board. So they see a lot of businesses come forward. Rye talked about how, when we talk about this decrease in business, of how it basically, it's a mask over how absurd and embarrassing our spread is. So when we talk about a decrease, and let's say I got a stack of money here, and here's the average taxpayer, single-family resident house, paying 3,500. And again, I used this example the other night. If that house became commercial, it's going to pay 8,000. So here we are, 3,500, 8,000, for the same building, if it was residential or commercial. What we're saying is, with this shift, the residential's going to go up anywhere probably under $30.
No, it's actually about 37.
37, okay. $37.
I'm sorry, 41.
41. I'll move it a little more. 41. And the commercial could go down anywhere from 300 to 900. Does that look even? No, it's still absurdly far apart. So yes, you can say residents are going up and commercials going down, but it is still absurdly. One sheet, which I appreciate the assessor providing me the information today that I handed to all the councillors, was these numbers. I asked her to provide me with the number of homes, residents, and businesses. And it's an interesting sheet to look at because if you add up all the residential properties, the single-family homes, the condos, the trailer, I will question if I could to the assessor. You've probably got to come to the mic, though. Trailer parks and multi-house, which in parentheses is multi-house is a multiple building. When it says 42, is that per trailer or?
No, that's the number of parcels. So there's a code 103, that's a trailer park, and a 109 is multi-house. So they're together on one line on the LA4. So there's 42 parcels overall. So there's 42 parcels overall.
Okay, so their increase would be spread out over a number of actual mobile homes?
No, we build the parks. We don't build each individual trailer because they don't own the land that the trailer is on.
Okay. Would their tax increase be less than probably the average single home?
What's that, the trailer park?
Per owner? Per resident that lives in a?
I don't know because, I mean, we build the parks.
Okay, all right. I just didn't know how that divided up. But anyway, it also includes two-family homes, three-family homes, and four-plus family homes. So if you add up all the residential properties, not including the personal property and not including the mixed use, there's over 4,600 properties being taxed for residential. If you add up the commercial and industrial, there's 318. So without, again, including the personal property, there's, which most of the personal property actually falls on the commercial end. There is a few second homeowners, but most of it falls on the commercial end. 95% of the tax bills go to residents. But 62% of the taxes are paid by the residents. So again, we have 5% is commercial, and they're paying 38% or over 35 if we figure out some of the personal property. So again, if you want to play scales, that seems like an unfair number. The, here's another interesting one because I mentioned this at the beginning when I talked about what Mr. Carver said about how a high tax rate shifts us, shifts those commercial properties to non-tax properties. And that becomes a burden for both sides. Every building that becomes a nonprofit has to be paid for in some other manner. And it will go back in and we all have to pay for it. There are 318 commercial and industrial properties. There are 354 non-tax exempted properties. So we have more tax-exempt properties than we actually have commercial properties. So just something to absorb that. And then I do agree with Counselor Barbo. I wish there was a way we could get something mandatory, in a sense, from nonprofits because they do use our resources. The only way we can do it is through getting donations, and you can't require that. So that's separate from this. Back to the commercial, our spread is just absurd. When you look at the numbers across the state, they're not even close. Holyoke, when you look at, North Adams, Pittsburgh and Holyoke are the three highest. They tend to be on the poorer end of communities. And I believe when this spread was allowed, we were a single rate in 1980 and then the spread was allowed. It was to take advantage of the big giants we had. Sprague Electrics, GE, and I don't know, it wasn't Holyoke. And we don't have Sprague Electric now. We don't have GE now. So it does fall on these, on the smaller businesses, other than a couple, like Walmart. And, you know, and Walmart does pay a fair share. I mean, it pays, you know, $400,000, $500,000 in taxes. So it's not like we're not getting anything. But we don't have that many Walmarts. It's mostly small businesses that are paying this. I support the 1.715 because it is a compromise. I'd rather 1.68. That's what we've done in the past two years. So if anything, we are going in favor of the residents. Also note that a number of these residents are two-family, three-family, four, and up. So divide those by the number of apartments, and that's what those units are. So you said, what, $41 per house, right?
From what the mayor suggested to what?
So if it's a four-unit apartment, it's $10 per unit, per year. That's $10 a year. Now, they may be assessed higher. They also may be assessed lower. There are multifamily homes that are assessed below the average home. So a duplex is going to cut that number in half. So instead of 40, you're paying 20. Divide that by the month, you're talking less than $2 a month. But on the commercial end, it actually does make a difference. It makes enough of a difference, as former Counselor Sweeney said, that, you know, that it can pay an employee. It can pay a paycheck and pay a couple paychecks. Mr. Cardamino, at the beginning, made a point that is correct. He says, if you go up the commercials, well, they'll just make it back. They'll just charge more. Well, who are they charging more? It's going back to the residents anyway. So if you want to charge the commercial more, two things are going to happen. Either, right, they're going to have to raise their prices and it's going to go onto the residents, or they're going to close their doors because they can't make enough money. Because people are just going to shop elsewhere. You know, there's some things they can't. But people are shopping online now. And if they can save $2 online, they're not going to buy it local. It's happening. So I support the 1.715 because I feel it's a fair compromise. And we're talking, you know, under $40 or less, depending on the units of your house.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yep. The dilemma, it's been said here tonight a number of times. We all think that the shift, the extreme difference in shift is a bad thing. Couple counselors have said, we don't see a way of changing that, especially if the state doesn't cooperate. Well, people that have been on the council a while, myself, Counselor Bona, and others, we've been trying to do something about that. We started at 175, previous administrations. And we shaved a little off. And we went to 1.71. We have been there before. We shaved a little bit more to try to solve the problem over time so it wouldn't be such a burden to the residents of North Adams. And we shifted a little more. I've only been on the council for eight years. But we got it down to 1.68. Looking to probably try to shave a little more so we can make it more equitable. Now, we're not making it more equitable, we're going back the other way. So we're losing ground to make it equitable. Unless somebody comes up with a magical formula for making it, the two sides closer together, we were already on that road as best as we could expect. Each year, we changed it so there wouldn't be a burden to the people, the residents of North Adams. And now we're giving up that. So while we come back and say, well, gee, we don't know what to do. We were doing something. Small. It could have taken us 20 years to get it closer to equality, but we were doing something. And now we're backpedaling. So I like the 1.68. I said that at committee. I say it now. So I think we're going backwards. And I'm going to vote against the 1.71. Not because I want it, that I'm unhappy about the compromise. I understand the compromise. It's a point I want to make. It should be 1.68 or lower if we're ever going to solve this problem. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. I know we've had a lot of discussion around this topic. And believe it or not, I think it's worthwhile conversation even though the direction is going against what I recommended. I thank Counselor Harpen for her support. And I think Counselor Barbo, you bring up an excellent point about the revenue issue. And I do want to work with all of you as we move forward on this. I think Ashley is correct about process and more information. But a lot of our process is dictated by the process of the Department of Revenue. I understand, Counselor Wilkinson, that all of you have been working to get this, we'll call it, back in check, so to say. And my proposal probably altered that. But with that being said, I really, you know, Jess, where did you go? Oh, she's not here. But I just want to touch upon a couple of things. One, I do believe we're a community. I do believe there should be no line between residential and businesses. And I certainly don't want to pit one population against the other. But we are one community. And we're all working very hard to sustain this community and make it stronger. But tonight, as I stand here with knowing the data and what we're seeing in residential sales and what we're seeing with our assessments in the commercial, I make this proposal because I felt that it was an appropriate impact on the businesses and a reasonable impact on the residential base. Again, trying not to split hairs. But I make this proposal because I know coming up down the road, we do have some new growth on the commercial side. We do have some other things coming up down the road for economic development. So I expect those commercial values to be, the total assessments to be changing within the next year or two. I make this pitch, I call it a pitch, because I was trying to be reasonable and equitable to each property. Now, I know what you say about Keith. I appreciate your demonstration with your hands. But I think we can get there. I know we can get there if we continue to work together. But I am not going to maximize the residential base. That's not what I believe is the right thing. I believe the 1.75 is the right place to be. I feel that the commercial are getting some kind of break, depending on where their values come in and where their personal property lists come in at. And I really think, not only businesses, but I really think our residents are hurting as well. And my proposal of 1.75 was to try to accommodate both populations at a time when the commercial base, the assessments, hadn't changed. And we'll work towards what you call the shift and getting it back in line. I'm sorry?
When?
We will work towards that. But you've been chipping away at it for years and years and years. And now I come in and everybody wants it to be fixed in 10 months. I was really focused on my proposal of being sensitive to the residential base and also the commercial. So I look forward to working and discussing this more. I think one takeaway that we have from this process is maybe getting to the Finance Committee earlier and having discussions through the year. I think all of our points are reasonable. The question of when, Counselor Wilkinson, when is every day? Every day, we work towards a better community. But I'm going to stand strong on the 1.75. That is my recommendation. And my focus is really on decreasing the impact to our residential base. So thank you for your time and all your effort in this process.
Counselor Barbo?
I listened intently to what Counselor Wilkinson had to say. And I believe maybe there was a misunderstanding. So I want to be clear why my vote will be no tonight. We have, as has been clearly demonstrated, this. It doesn't matter whether at 1.751, it doesn't matter where we are. We don't have any equality and no one is properly being represented. Regardless, we need a stream of revenue. And we do not have what we need to maintain this city. We need police. We didn't have money. We can't hire an assessor. Our city workers are underpaid. Counselor Bona discussed this in the Finance Committee. We have serious issues in this city. And we cannot continue to chip and shave, I believe is the word that's been used. This council, I believe, needs to work with the administration. And we need to find ways to bring income in that is equitable for everyone to pay what our expenses are coming through the city. So I just don't want to be misunderstood that I'm not supporting. I'm not against anything. I'm against the fact that we do not have an equitable stream of income coming into the city of North Adams. And that's what my biggest concern is.
So I'm going to comment on that. Because yes, you both feel that way. And Counselor Shade referenced it. But our job here tonight is to set the shift, which, I mean, everybody calls this the tax rate-setting meeting. It's not. We set the shift, which in and of itself sets the tax rate. So I just want to, I know people have the idea that we need more revenue, we need more revenue streams, and we need more sources. And I would say that we need a lot more done coming from the state, et cetera, et cetera. But that's not what we're here to do tonight. We're here to set the tax rate, or set the tax shift so that we can set the tax rate so that the tax collector can get the bills out in time so that she can actually collect the money in timeframes that manage our cash flow. So that's what we're here. There are all these other, we should be doing more for economic development and encouraging businesses to grow and to come here. And, but that's a conversation for another day, preferably at the Community Development Committee with CDAB, with a lot of other committees and commissions in the city. So I just want to clarify, what we're here to do is to set the tax split. We have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote.
To clarify, we are voting on the 1.715.
Correct.
Thank you.
As recommended by the Finance Committee.
Can I just ask a question, a process question? So when you vote on the shift, do you also have to amend that council paper that I presented to put the rate percentages in? You should read that into the record.
Okay. Where's the, do we have that paper? Because all I have here is the?
We can help you with that if you'd like. But I would only really want to help you if you do the 1.75 and then we don't have to do it. No, I'm kidding.
Then they wouldn't need your help.
Okay. So Jess, do you want to read those numbers? I just want to make sure.
Well, we got to vote on if we're accepting the shift first, right?
Right. But I just want to understand, I just want to make sure this vote is right. Because tomorrow, we got to send it off to the Department of Revenue. And we need to get final certification. And I cannot afford in the timeline any errors on this.
So we don't, we need a sheet like this? That has the 1.175? Do we have that?
We do not have that because that's not what I presented. So we can give you the numbers to mock it up.
Okay.
And then tomorrow, a new paper like that, Counselor Blackmer, will be presented to the city clerk.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. So what are the numbers now? To the podium because?
It's actually in your packet?
Oh, you can go to that one. Tonight's packet?
Yep, the highlighted.
Okay. Oh, the one I couldn't read because I'm fat, I'm old. No, you're not.
Well, she can just read them off to you. She has them.
Yeah, just read them and I'll write them down.
Okay. So for the residential, it'll be 63.4188. Open space is still zero. Commercial, 21.4342. Industrial, 4.4719. And for personal property, 10.6750.
And what's the residential factor become?
That will be 0.8061.
0.8061. Okay.
So are we voting to amend that right now?
Yeah. So we're going to vote to amend it, to read that the Board of Assessors for the City of North Adams be and is hereby authorized to establish the fiscal year 2023 tax levy for the following classes of property for fiscal year 2023. Class 1, residential, 63.4188%. Class 2, open space, 0%. Class 3, commercial, 21.4342%. Class 4, industrial, 4.4719%. Class 5, personal property, 10.6750%. And be it further ordered that a residential factor of .8061. And be it further ordered that no residential exemption be adopted, that no discount be applied to open-space properties, and that no small commercial exemption be adopted.
So move. This is an amendment or this is the amendment?
Yeah, okay. So that's the amendment.
So motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
Counselor Bona, Counselor Zapienza. So we have to vote on this? Actually, we're amending it. We're just amending it. We're redoing it. Okay. So voting on the amendment and the actual order?
Roll call.
Yeah, it is a roll call.
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Obasahang?
Yes.
Leswick?
No.
Zapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Blackmer?
Yes. Five yeas. Motion carries? We don't need a supermajority to do it? I didn't think so. Okay. So that's the amendment, but it's actually the whole order.
Just a question, don't we need majority on that?
Just a question, don't we need majority on that?
We did, we had a five, we had a majority. We had five, four.
Great.
Okay. I said we had a majority. Financial issues, I thought we had to have a super majority.
That would be for borrowing.
Borrowing. Borrowing and putting money into, taking money out of stabilization. Okay, so, I mean, we voted on the amendment, but it's the same order. So, we will vote on the order as amended.
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Blackmer?
Yes. Five, four. Council Paper ninety-five thirteen dash thirty-one, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter Seven, Section seven dash eleven of the Revised Ordinances of the Acts of North Adams Regarding the Change of Permit Prices. It was postponed to this meeting. Do we have an update for finance or do we want to postpone to the next meeting?
We'll make a motion to postpone. This is going to go a little further. So, while all the numbers have been, well, first, I'm going to make a motion to postpone to the second meeting of January.
Second.
So, all the numbers have come in and they're, been compiled into a spreadsheet. Where the issue is now is to write the ordinance. There are over forty locations in our ordinances where fees are mentioned. And what we're going to be doing is removing those fees from the ordinances and referencing the schedule of fees. That way, we can change the schedule of fees down the road without actually having to change. So, the figures have been approved and recommended by the different committees and the Finance Committee, but now it is to give us time to write an appropriate ordinance to bring forward. If it was just a couple places, it wouldn't be that hard, but because there are so many scattered throughout the ordinances, it's going to take some time to write those amendments.
Okay, so a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper eleven thousand two eighty-six, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding the Various Fees Established. Move to postpone?
Move to postpone to second meeting of January.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's Counselor Shade. Same comments, I'm assuming, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Council Paper twelve thousand one ninety-two, Without Objection, I'm going to file the communication. The mayor will bring it back at a later date.
It's one ninety-three.
That was the, sorry.
Oh, good, okay, I missed that one. So, cancel that. Council Paper twelve thousand one ninety-three, Mayor's Communication Number one thirteen, Presenting an Award to Officer Bujo from the United States Attorney's Office. Without objection, I'll file the communication and then it'll come back at a later date. Got to go back to the licenses. Licenses, An Application Submitted by Richard Lacoste to Be Granted License to Drive a Taxicab for OTT Taxi.
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Sapienza, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Application Submitted by Monique Horn to Be Granted a License to Drive a Taxicab for OTT Taxi.
Move to approve. Second.
Counselor Obasahan is the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Application Submitted by Michaela Bailey to Be Granted a License to Drive a Taxicab for OTT Taxi.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Counselor Obasahan and Counselor Wilkinson, I think, I couldn't hear. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open forum, anyone wish to address the council in open forum, discuss an issue of municipal significance? You have two minutes and no personal attacks.
Mr. Smith, it is a one sixty-three, North Street. It was a hard fought battle for the council to make. I understand that. I'm the big old man. Not working. I'm the big old man.
Can you go up to the micro, can you get closer to the microphone? Can you try the other microphone, Mr. Smith? I'm sorry.
I'm the big old man. It was ranked, just went up December first. But I understand that we need to support the businesses in our city because they bring in revenue and I'm a person who likes to shop locally. But we can't forget that those businesses need the residents in the city to survive. Mr. Calamino pointed out that the big companies could raise their rates and that would affect even more so the residents in the city who shop in those places. So, it's a toss-up for me, but I got to say, I think it was Counselor Barbo who mentioned that we have to try and get more revenue into the city. I think that's where we lack the idea that if we do that, you could probably get more reasonable tax rates to everybody in our city. So, I think we should work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, Counselor Bona and Counselor Wilkinson, a long time ago, I mentioned that Walmart was not paying for their inventory and you come back and said, "Well, there's a lot of vendors." Well, why didn't you do something about that back then?
I never remember saying that.
Excuse me?
Okay. And I want to see you start shoveling your sidewalks in front of your businesses and go up on the parking on Center Street. And I want to see the mayor rescind public health for counselors and their families. And there's only one counselor that I know gets it and he's been getting it for twenty years and he's been very vocal about it. And I'm going to tell you something, there's going to be some new faces on this council and I'm going to be very vocal about it. And there may be some boycotts of some of the city businesses. People are going to the Dollar Store and Aldi's. And Walmart is lowering some prices. But Berkshire Gas and the electric company are going up and the seniors can't afford it. And you're ignoring the seniors who paid for this city for years and years and years. We supported this city and supported your businesses. And that's going to change. If I have anything to say about it, thank you.
Next. Anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, hearing none. Mayor's updates.
I just want to remind everyone, tomorrow at five thirty, we will have our tree lighting on Main Street. Everyone's welcome and to gather. I hear Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be joining us from the North Pole. So, please come out with your families and grab a cup of hot chocolate and there'll be some activities going on at local businesses and at the churches. And then, other than that, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Other counselors? Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, I just want to wish my colleagues and the folks in the city of North Adams a happy Thanksgiving. Hope it's a good and safe holiday for everybody and please enjoy the season. Thank you.
I will make my annual pitch about taking care of your animals. It's getting cold. We've had some cold nights. Make sure they're in. You wouldn't want to be standing outside freezing. Don't make them. Also, clear off your windshield in your cars. Don't wipe a little spot and try and drive. It's not safe. Have a happy Thanksgiving. I really want to thank Ms. Lindcourt for all the extra work she put in and the meetings we had to come to so that we could have this very lively discussion and the, I know there was extra work for you and I really do appreciate you doing it.
Not a problem.
So, anyone else? Move to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.